Oh, Mimecast is blocking her, she says.
Mimecast was blocking?
So will you let her know that I'm gonna have... Somebody from IT give her a call?
Okay. Somebody from IT will give you a call.
Councilmember Jayraj, can you ask her if she's on her iPad?
Are you on your iPad? She is on her iPad. Uh, meeting ID number is 707-599-032. Yes. Okay, sounds good. Goodbye. Alrighty.
Thank you, Councilmember Jayraj.
No problem.
Do we have Councilmember Sterns yet?
Councilmember Malanga, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
We can, yes, wonderful. She's gonna request that you allow her to use your video. Oh. Am I on? Yes, you are. Councilmember Malanga, you're very dark, in a very dark room, it looks like. Can you turn on a light in your room?
Yes, hold on.
Shauna, how do we get the Auburn background? I never got that.
Um, I can, so if you go to the more button, and where it says virtual background, you can add it. So if... I can, I can help you with that tomorrow.
Hey, let's do that tomorrow.
Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Sterns, can you hear me? You have two, three attendees? Are they real? Those are real attendees. Cool. David, are you attending as an attendee? Are you online? He's not, no. Yeah, I don't know why. So... Councilmember Sterns, can you unmute yourself?
Are we sure he's there?
Yeah, I see. I see him there. Councilmember Sterns, can you unmute your microphone, please? Councilmember Sterns, can you unmute your microphone, please? Thank you. Councilmember Sterns, yes.
Councilmember Sterns, can you turn your camera to landscape?
Okay, before we call the meeting to order, I want to read off a few things tonight. First of all, good evening, council directors, staff, and everyone who has decided to join us remotely tonight. As you are aware, tonight's meeting is a virtual meeting. In order for us to have an efficient meeting, I'd like to go over a couple of points with you. For those that are joining us from the public tonight, please note that your microphone will be muted on the city's side until you are invited to speak. Please make sure your speaker and your microphone are turned on. If you're unable to hear the meeting or speak when you are called on, please call 888-475-4499. The meeting ID is 707-599-032. Those numbers can be found in the meeting website on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers and directors will be responsible for unmuting themselves when it is your time to speak, and also muting yourself when you are finished speaking. I will be going through the agenda a little slower than normal to allow time to transition without rushing anyone. Okay, so with that, I believe we are ready to go. Yes, everyone ready here? All right. I will call this meeting to order, and if everyone would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America. Which stands... With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Shaun, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Decorsi?
Here.
Councilmember Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Jayraj? You'll have to unmute yourself.
Here, sorry.
Councilmember Malanga?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sterns? Councilmember Sterns, you have to unmute yourself.
Here.
And Councilmember Trout-Manuel?
Here.
All right, thank you. All right, first, we have new business this evening, and it's item 3A, council rules of procedure. And it is a recommendation. Is the deputy mayor going to read that, or do you want me to read it first?
It's a motion for the deputy mayor to make when he's ready.
Deputy Mayor Decorsi.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to suspend the, extend the rules of the suspension of the council rules of procedure, 3.1H, 4.1, 10.1, 11.2B, and 16.1 that were amended on March 12, 2020 during the special council meeting through March 5, and to allow the general and virtual participation and telephonic participation in all council meetings.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Decorsi, did you want through May 5?
Could you repeat that, Mayor?
Did you want that to be in effect through May 5?
Effective through May 5, yes.
Thank you. And is there a second needed on that one? All right. So we have a motion to extend the suspension of council rules. Is there a second? Councilmember Baggett?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Decorsi, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Mayor, thank you very much. We did extend the rules previously, but with the governor's new stay-home, stay-safe directive through May 4, 2020, it's necessary for us to extend that suspension again and again through May 5. And this will allow our regular council meetings for audience participation through virtual and telephonic comments, our council member meeting attendance at all meetings through virtual or telephonic meetings, and for comments, concerns, and testimony to council can be done telephonically for persons addressing the council, and for public hearings to allow virtual or telephonic audience attendance at all public hearings.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? I don't see any hands raised. So all those in favor of the extension of the suspension of council rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, I have a couple of proclamations to read this evening. The first one, April 20th, or April 2020 marks the start of Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Though we're all experiencing a difficult and uncertain time during the COVID-19 crisis, it's important to still come together, support survivors, and help prevent sexual assault. In the past several years, the rise of the Me Too movement has brought forth millions of powerful stories, illustrating the widespread impact of sexual assault, harassment, and abuse. It's time to deepen the discussion around prevention. We can reduce instances of sexual violence by normalizing consent, educating ourselves and our loved ones, and supporting survivors. We can definitely all be part of the solution. And so, the resolution, whereas sexual assault affects women, children, and men of all racial, cultural, and economic backgrounds, and whereas in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide. And whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every person in this community. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate sexual assault on their own, but we can work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support victims and survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing service to survivors. And whereas the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center works hard to end the silence about sexual violence and creates new community-centered sexual violence prevention programs and resources. And whereas the prevention is possible when everyone gets involved. The first step is to, is increasing education, awareness, and community involvement. It's time for all of us to take action to create a safer environment for all. And now, therefore, I, Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 2020 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Auburn, and urge all citizens to join advocates and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future, dated the 16th day of April, 2020. And we also have one more proclamation this evening for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week is a time for us to recognize, honor, and thank those who serve in this demanding profession. And whereas we recognize our own Valley Communications Center, a regional 911 center for South King County, as a vital link to police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas this designated week is a time for a grateful community and nation to show our appreciation for the life-saving work they do, and to celebrate and honor these unseen heroes with public recognition and activities. And now, therefore, I, Nancy Backus, Mayor of the City of Auburn, do hereby proclaim April 12 through the 18, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and residents safe. I think at a time such as this with the crisis that our nation is going through, and we're thanking all of our first responders and those in those essential jobs that are keeping this country running, we need to make sure that the telecommunications are not forgotten in that. So thank you very much, and we appreciate the great work that they are doing. Right, Shaun, do we have any agenda modifications this evening?
No, Your Honor.
All right, we have no public hearings this evening, so we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. For virtual participation, participants wishing to speak during a public hearing or public comments are asked to raise their hand with the Zoom program on your phone, it is *9, to indicate that you would like to speak for public comment. If you're unable to raise your hand at the end of the virtual public comment period, I will open all lines and ask for additional comments. You will then be asked to state your name and address for the record, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Participants can alternatively submit written comments to scampbell@auburnwa.gov. All written comments must be received prior to 7:00 PM on the day of the scheduled meeting and must be 350 words or less. Is there anyone on this call that would like to speak? No? All right, Shaun, I believe you do have written comments that you would like to share?
Yes, Your Honor. Bob Zimmerman sent in these written comments. His address is 3302946 Place South. His comments are, "I certainly hope our mayor and council realize how little control they have over the current coronavirus crisis. The reports of this starting in November without a proper response should be a valuable lesson. Prevention is the best emergency response policy. Maybe this crisis will be the motivation needed for the Backus administration to realize Auburn can no longer afford to ignore the codes that will mitigate the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake. The illusion of temporary economic gain is not worth sacrificing safety and lives. Council originally canceled live meetings for lack of a quorum. I expect you are concerned about your safety." Excuse me. Welcome to the club. The court supporting local governments ignoring the national codes for accommodating risk is stressful to the potential victims. It has been said, knowledge is power, but in Auburn, it is little more than a source of stress and anxiety. Ignorance is truly bliss. Without knowledge of the explosive force of propane, the code provisions, and the safety warnings by the industry of geologists, life in the Auburn could be quite pleasant. The early cover-up and delays addressing coronavirus by irresponsible people ignoring safety protocols has resulted in the worldwide disaster. Two years ago, the Gates Foundation financed a study predicting a pandemic within the decade. Nobody paid any attention. No preparations were made. A recent news commentator said, "This is the big one, not the earthquake." Our infrastructure is still intact. Water, power, communications, transportation, freeways, and streets are all functional. Our stores are being restocked with the necessities of life. Our homes and other structures are still providing shelter and security. All of that will be compromised in the big one. This will be Sunday School picnic by comparison, and the time to bring Auburn's safety standards and code enforcement up to the level practiced by the Department of Labor and Industries for job site safety and electrical code enforcement. Minimum standards shall be maintained. I hope the mayor and council are being, beginning to realize prevention is a thousand times more effective than response.
Thank you. Are there any other written comments, Shaun?
No, Your Honor, none have been provided.
All right. And I'll check one more time. Is there anyone in the, in the audience that was asking to speak? All right, we will move forward then. We have no correspondence this evening. We will move to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. And we have Councilmember Baggett as chair of the finance ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Sterns and myself comprise the finance committee, the ad hoc committee, and we reviewed about 50-plus pages of claims vouchers totaling $3.1 million dated April 6, 2020. Also reviewed payroll vouchers in the amount of $2.7 million for the period March 12 through March 31, 2020. We found no questions, and we recommend the council approval of these vouchers.
Thank you. Questions from council? All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Decorsi.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the March 12, 2020, and the March 23, 2020 special council meeting, minutes of the March 16, 2020 regular council meeting, the minutes of the March 23, 2020, and March 30 study sessions, and the claims vouchers and payroll vouchers that were discussed and presented by Councilmember Baggett.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Pardon? Oh.
Second that motion, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Brown. Sorry. Councilmember Decorsi, did you have anything that you wanted to, or Deputy Mayor Decorsi, anything that you wanted to share?
Could you repeat that, Mayor, I'm sorry?
Is there anything, Councilmember Brown has made the second. Is there anything else that you would like to share?
Uh, no, that's all.
All right. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Consent agenda passes. All right, we have no unfinished business this evening. We have already done new business. We will move to ordinances. Ordinance number 6764, an ordinance amending the 2019-2020 biennial budget, which represents the sixth budget amendment for the 2019-2020 biennium and the second budget amendment for 2020. Is there a motion? Councilmember Baggett?
Yes, I make a move to adopt ordinance 6764.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Trout-Manuel?
I second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Baggett?
Uh, council reviewed in detail at the March 30 study session this particular ordinance. This is the Sixth Amendment to ordinance 6693, which is the 2019 to 2020 biennial budget for the city. This Sixth Amendment is for $5.9 million, which will bring the total amended budget to $355.7 million, and includes three major elements. Number one is the 2019 budget carried forward. Number two is the adjustments to capital project budgets, and number three is new programs and expected changes in 2020.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6764, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Ordinance 6764 passes. Ordinance number 6765, an ordinance amending sections 3.10 and 3.12 relating to public contracting and purchasing. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion, counsel? Councilmember Brown?
Yes, Mayor, I recommend, I'd like to move adoption of ordinance 6765.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Jayraj?
I second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This was a measure that we had discussed previously at a council meeting to provide additional authority to the mayor, and it's a good idea at this point.
All right. Questions or comments from counsel? All those in favor of ordinance number 6765, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. Resolutions. Resolution number 5491, a resolution amending the agreement with the Auburn School District related to law enforcement services. Do we have a motion? Counselmember?
I move to, oh, sorry.
Counselmember?
I move to...
Councilmember Sterns, did you, okay. Councilmember Sterns, go ahead.
I move to adopt resolution 5491.
Thank you. Counselmember Trout, would you like to second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselmember Sterns?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution amends the city's current agreement with the Auburn School District, under which the city provides three police officers to the Auburn School District, three high schools. In order to assist the school officers, the district has agreed to provide the Auburn City Police Department with a vehicle for each officer. Resolution reflects this one-time purchase in the amount of $133,728. The school district will compensate the police department for the cost of purchase of the vehicles, which will become to the property of the City of Auburn.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of resolution 5491, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, resolution number 5505, a resolution to execute an interlocal agreement with the City of Algonia regarding water and sewer utility service for properties located along the boundaries between Auburn and Algonia. Do we have a motion? Counselmember Jayraj? Counselmember, I believe you're muted.
Sorry about that, Your Honor. I would like to make a motion on resolution 5505.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Decorsi?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counselmember Jayraj?
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution number 5505 authorizes the mayor to execute an interlocal, interlocal agreement with the City of Algonia establishing contractual relationship governing the provision of water and sewer utility service for several properties located along the boundaries between Auburn and... Auburn and Algonah's utility service areas.
Thank you. Questions from council? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution number 5505, please say aye.
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 Councilmember, there we go. All those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move to Mayor and Councilmember Reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. We will begin with Deputy Mayor DeCoursey.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, let me apologize for jumping ahead on the consent agenda, so instead of initially making the motion, I read the description. So, still getting used to this very different and somewhat uncomfortable virtual meetings we're conducting, so we'll try not to make that happen again. On March 20th, I had a virtual meeting that I attended with elected officials across the state on affordable housing and the COVID-19 issue. The meeting was facilitated by Michelle Thomas, who's with the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. And we had about an hour and a half discussion and conversation. And just a couple highlights, Michelle mentioned that the Department of Commerce has issued, it is issuing emergency grants for housing, and at that time, it was about $30 million to local jurisdictions. There's a request for potential property tax relief to suspend the April payments, and this is a county government initiative, so they're pushing for the King County and other county governments to look at a property tax relief during this time. And then also on the state level, looking for additional rental assistance to fund landlords for their properties on that as well. So, we're not quite sure where it's going to go, but those are some of the things that are being worked on. And then lastly, there's a challenge that has been put out to state corporations, and some have stepped up, and we're hoping more will step up during this time. And then on March 30th, I participated in a National Low Income Housing Coalition webinar. There was about 2,500 participants across the state, across the country, on this webinar, including Senator Reed from Rhode Island and Congresswoman Maxine Waters from California. There was a number of things discussed in this as well, including Senator Reed, who's a ranking member on the Appropriations Committee for Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development, of some of the other things that they're looking at for a potential fourth stimulus bill that may, working through itself through Congress here shortly. We had a presentation by a gentleman named Keith Turry, the Assistant Administrator of FEMA, and he's the Recovery Director for FEMA, and he was talking about the shelter assistance, the different types of housing, including hotel units, travel trailers, and then they're working also, FEMA, as you know, working with the states on a number of issues that FEMA can assist with. And there are 25 states at that time that were under the Federal Disaster Relief Recovery Program, and that of course includes Washington State. And then Congressman Maxine Waters, who is the Chair of the Finance Services Committee, gave her opinion as to where we are currently, and again pledged to work continuously in Congress to help the states and to again look at a potential fourth stimulus package. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown, do you have a report?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Jayraj.
Thank you, Your Honor, for this opportunity. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the essential services that are continuing to work. Really appreciate the dedication to our city, and also to the medical staff with multi-care. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutmanuel.
I don't have a report, but I do have a, just a comment, that on Sunday, the Knights of Columbus got 20 of us all together, and we were out, drove to the Holy Family Church, and we said a prayer for our city and our first responders, our nurses, our doctors, and our grocery staff, because they're out there working and keeping everything functioning for our, our community. And so, we said a prayer and said a rosary for everybody, and I just encourage everybody to keep doing the same thing.
Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. As most everybody knows, we're a two-county city, and we have several of our, our folks are located in Pierce County, as well as King County. And I attended two meetings during March and April for the Tacoma-Pierce County Board of Health, representing those in our city residing in Pierce County. One was in person, and one was virtual due to government mandates and a little common sense. The March 4th meeting involved the passing of three resolutions for contracts relating to dealing with the contaminated properties within the city of Tacoma and in Pierce County, and two other unrelated health policy agreements. The meeting also included a status of the COVID-19 virus pandemic by Dr. Anthony Chen, Director of Health and Staff. The April 1st meeting was primarily devoted to the update and current status of the COVID-19 virus situation, and the passing of five resolutions, including an emergency funding authorization for the Director of Health, and approval of various service agreements which involved a spirited dialogue between the County Executive, Bruce Demire, and the other board members prior to voting. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Malinga.
No report out at this time, but for the Youth and Children's King County Board, this week I'm doing my orientation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sterns.
My dear, Your Honor, I have no report at this time.
All right. I think I got everyone. So, obviously, within the city, within this entire nation, everything is COVID-19 related right now. There have been numerous meetings with mayors, with other elected officials. I definitely want to say a huge thank you to Deanna Dawson with Sound Cities Association, as she has done a stellar job of being the liaison between King County and the 38 cities that comprise SCA, so that we are not each bombarding and overloading the systems as King County moves to process through this crisis that we are in. Also, to Association of Washington Cities for their willingness. We had a mayor's meeting just earlier today to talk about what all of the cities within King County have been doing. Also want to say thank you to everyone on Team Auburn, whether you are working remotely, whether you are out in the field, whether you are an officer riding around in our city, you are Public Works, whoever you are. I want to give you my personal and professional thank you for the work that you have been doing. It takes a lot to keep a city functioning, and that means the IT group has been working overtime and just way above and beyond for the ability for us to even hold this meeting tonight. While they make it look easy, it is not. It takes a great deal of work to ensure that we can function. The legal department, the, every department that we have, community development, administration, legal, Parks Department, all of our departments, finance, who am I missing? Who am I missing?
Public Works.
No, I said Public Works. Yeah, I said our Public Works team is out there, but anyway, I'll say thank you to Public Works again. It takes a great deal, and I want to say a huge thank you also to all of the businesses who are considered essential, have remained open, to continue to allow our city to function and move forward, those in the grocery store, the first responders that we spoke of earlier this evening, everyone who is doing their part. And for some of you, that means staying home and staying safe, and that is exactly what you need to be doing when this is all over, and years from now, when perhaps a grandchild says, "What were you doing during the COVID-19 crisis of 2020?" You can say that you were saving lives by staying home and staying safe. And so, thank you, Auburn, for all that you are doing. It's a beautiful weather week, and I know you would love to be outside and going to the parks and gathering, but please, 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 no large gatherings. You can use our parks for passive. You can go out and walk, you can walk your dog, you can jog, but please, no gatherings on any of the sports courts or sports fields. There will be time for that, but that time is not now. And with that, I will say we are adjourned. Thank you.